All right, I'd like to invite everyone to stand for a pledge of allegiance. All right, welcome everyone to the April 6th meeting. Welcome. All right, been a couple weeks since we met. Into us. All right, approval of the minutes of March 16th. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of March 16th? We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and dispersment of funds. Do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
So moved.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the financial report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Louis is out today and we have Michelle stepping in and we have a bid opening on Project 2021-001, the wellhouse number four. Can you give us the bids?
Yes, and just as an overview, in January, the town of Elton advertised invitations to bid for, to construct wellhouse number four and the related equipment for connections to the water system and propose Southfield Elevated Water Storage Tank on the same property. A mandatory pre-bid meeting was held on February 22nd, resulting in the town's receipt of four bids, and I have bid docs for you if you want to fill it in for your own information. But, so the town received from Lawrence C. Bayton Builders Incorporated, a bid of $1,394,250, from Johnston Construction Company, $2,164,872, from Lee Foundation Company Incorporated, $1,802,500, and from Wickersham Construction, $1,357,284. The bids are going to be forwarded to KCI Technologies for review and then recommendation of award.
Very good.
The first one was from Lawrence C. Bayton Builders Incorporated, $1,394,250.
So it appears Wickersham is the little bid. So I agree with that philosophy. Let's get them to KCI, get them to review and make sure everyone's qualified.
Yes, sir.
Everyone good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Next up, we have an ARPA application for qualifying nonprofits.
And this was just for presentation to the board. This, the guidelines and the application were created following U.S. Treasury guidelines and information. We've attended several webinars, Steve, Louis and I, learning about the process and who qualifies, et cetera. So this application went out, was advertised, and then you'll see there's a matrix, a spreadsheet that I made as well. We dedicated files to this whole process, and those applicants that have applied, we'll track them, what's been applied for, the reasons, and then what gets dispersed, so that we have complete files for an anticipated audit for the whole process.
Very good. We feel pretty comfortable with the whole process.
There were a couple comments too, from Lawrence and Allen, I think, to, to suggest that's what they put on the application, so they're our auditors.
Yes, thank you.
Very good, that's great news, and it appears that so far, we've had about seven applicants and are under review, and that's wonderful. That's exactly what I think this board wanted to see happen and...
That's right.
I like the system too.
Yeah, it's great news. Now, the, of course, I know it was for the, well, you know, I'll take that down a little bit later, but there was a, I kind of feel a little bit for the nonprofits that kind of are just now starting and would not be eligible for any COVID funds per se, but we'll work that out in another manner for them at some point. Okay, very good. So up next, we have the Elton Alliance Request of Waiver for the Alcoholic Prohibition for the following events, and does the board want me to go one by one for them, or you want to lump them all in together?
Why don't you read them, then we can read them all collectively.
Okay, very good. The, Michelle, I'll go ahead and read them. You okay with that? Okay. The first event would be a car cruise on May 13th. The second would be a car cruise jump into June event on June 10th. The next item would be the Dog Days of Summer event, which is on June 17th. They expect the road closure for car cruise events would be from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and the closure would be in the area of 107, 109 Mini Street, the Courthouse Plaza, and 107 through, or 117 to 118 North Street to Main Street. Also, the Elton Alliance is requesting a road closure for Memorial Day Parade, which is going to be held on May 30th, and that would include Bow Street, Railroad Avenue, North Main and Howard Streets, I think the normal parade route. But I would say as long as they coordinate with EPD, the times and events, I don't see any hiccups in any of this.
I'll make a motion if it's all approved.
And we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on this at all? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And we did have a member of the Alliance here, and I made it easy on her today.
That's why...
One exception, though, there was not a date listed for the Elton Alliance request, second to the last.
Yeah, on the, on the car cruises, I think it would be those two dates, May 13th and June 10th.
The dates are just the both?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Very good. All right. Michelle, anything else to report?
Anything.
All right, nice. Okay, I had a handful of items I wanted to mention to the board or bring to the board's attention. I had a resident that lived over, off of 123 Hearthstone Road, and I sent the, I sent over some information to Dan Hanley, Louis George, I think even Gene Minner, and there was a parcel of land, it's off of Chessman, off of Hearthstone, and it's, we found out that it's actually a neighborhood park that was deeded in when the parcel, or when the houses were built. I guess what my question is, when we use the word neighborhood park, I'd like to know, was there a timeframe that the developer was supposed to put in a swing set or dog park? Was there, or was it just deeded to us to put in a park 25 years ago?
I could pull the original public works agreement, see what the parameters of the agreement were, and it might, even though it might be called a park, it might have just been required to be open space as part of the whole neighborhood in itself, but I can uphold the public works agreement and find out what the parameters were.
Yeah, I think that would be good. It's, I think it's about a full acre of land that's in between all those houses, and, you know, I know Dan's team's been mowing that grass for years and years and years and years, and I guess where I'm getting at with the board, these little pocket parks that we're not using, that we're mowing, should we offer to the residents to add ones to the property? You know, and I don't know. I don't know if that can be done, can't be done.
With the little bit that I know about, and I'll probably walk right into putting my foot in my mouth.
Yeah.
When a, for instance, at whatever time a neighborhood is built, State of Maryland says you have a number of houses that are built and so forth, so therefore you have to have a certain amount of dedicated open space.
Okay.
If that's not impervious surface, or it might be forest retention that's required. Do you want me to go ask Gene if she can pop in real quick?
No, no, that's fine. We'll gain more information on it, but I guess, maybe we, maybe we should see if there's something we can do with that neighborhood community park. I mean, Earl, that's not far from you.
It's in the circle where...
In the circle.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know.
They used to have kids playing in there all the time, but...
Oh, didn't they?
There was never any equipment there, but, right behind where, baseball.
Yeah, you're 100% right.
Right in the circle with the palace or, whatever. That circle, yeah, but, I've never seen equipment.
And the reason why it was brought up, one of the, one of the folks that, there's three entrances into that park, and between, I think, 123 and 125 Hearthstone, there's a leg there, and I think the individual at 123 would like to buy that leg, and it's where the request came from.
Okay.
And, but I, listen, I'm very happy that it's a community park, and it's great to hear that they were using it, because I didn't know if they were using it or not. So that's good news. I found out that the other comment I had was about the Memorial Day Parade. I didn't know exactly if it was going to be held on the 30th or not, but it is on the 30th. And probably, I don't think, you know, there's a question I have, there's a, does anyone know what's going on with the Ashley Furniture Building?
No.
That'd be a good story, that's why I was telling you.
So that's the, did they come in front of the planning commission and just, is that what you're hearing?
That would just come through Chip, right?
Yeah, I don't think the entire building is planned, we use that, I think, of course, not really.
Grocery?
Your Ashley Furniture Store is supposed to be.
Yeah, we'll get an answer here. Okay, like that.
Grocery outlet.
The hotline. We've got the hotline right on.
Right, red phone.
Grocery?
Grocery outlet.
All right. That's good to know. Okay. So I wanted to make the board aware that the, we have a invite on Saturday, May 14th, which will be the Singerly Fire Company 130th Annual Banquet. I would say that, I think there was a list coming through. I would say, I don't want to, if we're all still on the board, I would say to you that I would definitely be coming, but I would also kind of reserve spaces that if we weren't all on the board, that there'd be a spot for. Okay? I think that'd be a good move. Okay, the Elton Little League Parade is on Friday, and Chief, I was asked to ask if you wanted to walk in the parade, if you're down there.
Yes, I always want to find out if to ask.
Yeah, Tim Eller actually sent me a text yesterday to make sure that the chief is invited to walk along with everybody, so our group here, I'd say that we meet down there about quarter to six, and normally we meet down at the ball fields.
Not, okay.
Yeah.
Is this Friday already?
Yeah, it's this Friday is the Little League Parade.
Is it going to rain, or you don't mind?
The police car.
Oh, I haven't heard whether they're gonna, if there's a rain date or not. Normally there's not. No, my expectations, if it's raining like it did earlier, I doubt if they will even have the event, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't call that myself.
So there's gonna be some transportation for Gene?
We can get, listen, we can get the parade route, we got Dan right over there, we can have the parade going right over there.
Okay, that's where Dan is at.
We've got a trailer, right? Yeah, I know. You don't, you like to pick on me, don't you?
The, I guess the last comment that I had, Michelle and I was having a little bit of discussion prior to the meeting. She went to the City of Happy Grace, I think Steve, you and Michelle went, and their meeting room is fairly similar, probably in size to ours, a little bit of changes here and there, but they have moved forward with state-of-the-art technology per se, and some of the technology that we've had in here is really old school. You know, today, if you buy a television set, it's what they call a smart TV, and you can go wireless from your computer to your TV. Probably the police department has smart TVs in them.
We actually just got one, using some Task Force funds.
So I'd like to say, we will definitely allocate some funds in the budget to revamp this room, to bring us into the 21st century with our technology into this room, and I think the guy in Happy Grace said that the things that they did in their room cost them about $10,000. We could probably even use the ARPA funding possibly for this. But there's no reason why we shouldn't have smart TVs in a couple locations, maybe one on the rear, one here on the side. Maybe we can take down that mayor alts pitcher and put one on that side, and we can do those things, and what's unique about it, you don't need to have all the wires that we have here today. Earl, you could probably figure that out for us, for the wiring.
No, it's rough, there aren't two.
It was.
It was. We had planning commission one time where we couldn't hear a thing.
You can't hear a thing, and...
I'm glad it's, you know, behind us.
I think that we could, we could take this room, we should do it. You guys all kind of agree with that?
I agree.
Yeah, we just need to get it done. So let's figure out how we can get some funding to get it, maybe get a couple quotes or a couple, what do you call them?
What kind? Art heroes? What's the audio people, AV people? Get us some AV people in here and see how we can do it, but it's nothing to get more screen TVs that you can do it that way today.
The gentleman from, the IT manager, Jeff, at Happy Grace, is just as nice as he could be, and he offered to come up here and look at over, and he did a lot of rewiring and said that he saved, he was able to save the town quite a bit of money in doing it himself, so he said he would be more than happy to come down.
You like him, huh?
Yeah, my master's son, this is what he does professionally, he goes all over York and all around for, you know, singers and all that.
He is good.
And he's excellent.
He is good. Can we get him in here?
I'll make that happen.
He is good. He did all the telecast and a lot of those, I saw his, his work is phenomenal. Okay, that's all I have, Rob. You have anything to add today?
Yeah, I've got a couple things. First, I'd like to thank everybody who showed up and helped out at the Armory to gather all the fishing gear for the upcoming fishing derby. That went well. All of the rods have new line on them, all of the fishing tackle and bait stations are arranged and ready to be put out. I attended a meeting this morning with the Toys for Tots people, I'm on the board there, and their outing is going to be on July 8th at Furnace Bay, and I told them I would try to put a team together, so I would like for us to get a team put together from the town of Elton. That's going to be 125 per man, 500 per team, and we would get a sign for that. They also offered to, because they have a backlog of toys left over from last year, they're going to let me load up and bring all those toys to the fishing tournament this year and give them out to the kids.
Oh, wow.
Every child this year is going to go home with something.
So what do you want as far as donations are concerned?
I'll still take from, from anybody who wants to donate, you can give me anything. Like I told one person, just think about what a child would want for Christmas, and we'll put that on the table. It doesn't necessarily have to be a rod and reel combo, anything to do with fishing. It can be a board game, a basketball catcher's mitt, it can be anything.
What do you do?
Everybody gave me plenty of stuff.
But are you sure a lot of you covered?
I am sure. They have a lot of stuff down there, and every kid this year is going to go home with something. They also suggest, or they gave me their desire to collaborate with the town in some way, with the Toys for Tots Drive this year, and I suggested that they get themselves on the agenda and come present, make a presentation to our support. So they'll be doing that soon.
Good.
And that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Rob. Earl?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to start by saying, this weekend, we had several celebrations for entertainment for the Elton of Arts. On Friday at night, I attended Elton Middle School production of Annie Junior, and it was a very impressive, I was very impressed with the talent and professionalism of those young kids at Elton Middle School. The show was directed by Ms. Anne Smith and produced by Ms. Chelsa Jones, who is a teacher there at Elton Middle School, and if anyone ever seen a TV show or movie, these kids done professionally, were, I mean, they seemed like something that was already practiced in the figure and stood just up in middle school program, so it happened on Friday and Saturday, and the room was packed both nights. But I just want, I would like to see the partnership between maybe Cecil County Public Schools and Cecil College regarding support of the talented young people, whether it be used for equipment or possible scholarship programs. I'm looking at some of the stuff that they went out and rented, like the screen, the lighting, all that stuff, they probably could have got to Cecil College if they had partnered up with the college, but I'm saying, I'm not sure exactly what steps to take, but it would be good to see the college partner up with the schools, and then the kids would have something to look forward to as they leave middle school, high school, and maybe into college or into the theater part of the arts. Also, on Saturday, I attended the dedication for Bernard Purdy, the mural at the community center. Mr. Purdy is key, gorgeous, miho, no go zane. Is that right? And also, their bass, she was the keyboardist player, and the bass player, Danny Boone, treated us with amazing set. I was planning on going for the dedication, running out, but I'm telling you, the music just puts you in a place where you didn't want to leave, you didn't move, you just was excited. I mean, they kind of made five, six songs. Me being a drummer, I was amazed just to see Mr. Purdy in action, so I want to really look at maybe it becoming an annual event, possibly a fundraiser for the Elton High School Scholarship, not the one that's going on right now, the Elton High School Scholarship, but another one that will include science and arts or art entertainment, someone involved with the drums, kids who are taking up that as a, you know, as a hobby, and then when Mr. Bernard maybe gets his little annual event, the kids would just come on the stage and play with him, get a chance to get a feel playing with a professional drummer. Those are just ideas that, but not to take away from the Elton Alliance who really put all this together. I want to first of all thank Jessica Price, Margie Blystone, and the Elton Alliance for their part in this, because it was great, the way they come together as a community and the support that they did get for the mural. Also, talking a little longer, Annie Marie Hamilton and the Arts Council, Mary McCall and Parks and Recreation, and the entire team that made this success, such a success. But one thing that I didn't mention was the artists, the one who really done the painting. I'm not sure whether we already gave them a, I would like to put something together for them, because...
Bruce Gully.
Bruce, Bruce Gully?
Gully.
Gully. I mean, amazing the way this all fell together and came together, and my last comment on this would be, I have a 14-year-old Webster. He came in before starting and said, Papa, is the drum good?
No.
He's never heard him before, and all the comments acted, it was over when he came on and told his mom out. Impressed he was with, this man was so good and exciting, just like they talked about in the paper. It brought the, the story together, and I hate to brag about this, went to work last night, and on my way out the door, one of the drummers that attended stopped me for about 10 minutes explaining how he was just amazed of the stories, Rita Franklin, James Brown, who he played with. I want to know more about the people that he dealt with, and these are things that all opened up from this, so I'm just really impressed. Man, I'm not done yet.
Do you know, he has a book?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So anyway, I just want to let you know how excited I am about that. And so there's a couple other comments I'd like to make, not around the music, but I just want to make sure that those people get their kudos for that. I had a question about the gas lines being placed in the town of Elton, Whitehall Road, Buttonwood, and these other places. I did talk to the contractor after they dug up the dirt, laid the, I said they're replacing lines, not putting new lines, but replacing lines, but the question I'd like to ask is, number one, who's monitoring them? The town, staff monitoring them? Who's coming back to seed the grass, because I like to keep my grass looking good on that corner. I've got hilly roots that they left, I want to find out who, who to contact to make them come back, not just my property, all through town where they dug up, need to be seeded, grassed, and leveled out and put back in the proper respective place. So I mean, I'm really, I'll follow that one up, but...
I'll have, I'll have a look at that person.
Then, I would also like to find out, is anything being done with the Happy 40's properties, this term, that's riding that road? If they're not going to use it, something needs to be done with that building, instead of it to bend and fall down and diminish to nothing, so...
Or can we tack on something?
No, you already don't. I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
What are you done for?
They're fine, go ahead. All right.
John, is there any action we could take on that Happy 40 building, because it is decaying, and I think there's plywood needed and windows? I'm not sure if anyone's hanging out in there or not.
Yeah, I don't know as to that, but I know Chip has had ongoing interaction with property on the, property owner has, I think, the leavings of some of the property at some, or it seems to be ridiculous price, and in the meantime, the building just sits there.
I want to just be like Happy, I like the George restaurant, where we take three, five years to try to get something placed, it needs to be booked in and taken care of.
Even though he had it for sale, can we condemn it? Or whether he had it for sale or not?
A qualified yes. Let me, I know Chip has had ongoing discussions, I haven't talked to him within the last two months about that. Let me, at the moment, touch base with him and see where we are, but the answer to your question is yes, but property's pretty valuable, I don't know if you all spend that company.
Okay.
It's a couple million dollars. It's a big piece of land, it's zoom right along the...
But I meant the building.
Well, if you don't get one without the other.
Oh, okay.
So, but we'll follow up on that.
What else did you add, buddy?
Earl just brought something to my mind, talking about a building falling into disrepair. Very concerned about the Howard House, or Mini Hanks, you know, whatever you want to call it, I'm concerned with that property on that corner. I feel that it has fallen into such a state of disrepair and need. I haven't been in there, but I understand there are some mold problems, some rot problems, and I'm worried that one of our finest buildings in town is going to become unsellable and sit there as a ghost building forever. I don't know what we can do, are there any avenues that we can explore to renovate that building so that it can be for sale? And I don't even know if that falls under us, because we don't own it.
I wish it did.
Any thoughts on that? Anybody?
I have, I really, I have none on the minutes. I mean, it's, it's private property and it's still being used on occasion, and I don't think that we have the ability to go inside the property to look on floors two, three, and four with the comments that it stated, but I don't know, I've never been on, I've never physically seen floors two, three, and four, and I don't think that we are really allowed to go on the two, three, and four unless there was an issue. John, what do you think?
Well, I was on floors two, three, and four within the last 10 years, and it's, it's a mess, and I'm sure it still is a mess. I know there are a number of windows that are open periodically, when you walk by and look up, you see a window that may be open for a week or two.
Almost nonstop.
Yeah.
For what reason?
I don't know, but I have seen squirrels and birds going in and out of there.
I mean, that's a historical building.
I wonder if the historical society can pursue any grant money to, because I'm afraid in the end, we're, they're going to leave and we're going to be left with this beautiful building in one of our prime locations, unsellable, unusable. It's just, it's been bothering me for a while, and when you brought up that other building, Happy 40, it made me think differently, to bring that up.
I know that it's for sale, that parcel's for sale. I know that it's for sale. That parcel's for sale also. And I know recently there's been a couple of walkers. Yeah, there has been, there's been a couple of door knockers anyhow in that parcel. I don't, I, I agree with you. I mean, look at the Holly Hole property, what's happened with it. And we've been trying for eight years to get some action done with that, and it's, we've been at kind of weeks end.
Yeah, I really didn't expect to get an answer, but I think we all need to start thinking about that. Be ashamed to.
Find a buyer.
Yeah, just one more thought, not particularly illegal, but I guess it touches on those issues, which is one of the difficulties that people who are maybe interested in purchasing that property are having is that it has not been ongoing use and will have to be brought all up to current code, which means elevators, probably two elevators. There are going to be a couple hundred thousand apiece. There's considerable deterioration as indicated in the roofing. I don't know if you've ever sat in the driveway between them and the pennies, the bakery. But that side of the building has a huge honeybee hive. Huge. There's, there are a lot of underlying issues, including what that is. It's got to be addressed by anybody that ends up buying it in order to put it in use. And so I, it's going to be a struggle. It will be. Anything else, Earl?
Charles? Let me just basically piggyback on Earl's presentation. Bernard Purdy was here on Saturday, and when he was going up there, as I mentioned to the crowd, his name, to us, Buggsy Purdy. And he had a great celebration, and kudos to those who were responsible for it. He really enjoyed it. It's almost like the Protestant son in the Bible coming home because he actually been here before for other events. But this time he came here and he was honored. And so, you know, that was good. He has a little bit of history here, too. I think just before the actual integration of school, I think he might have been the first African American that went there. He worked for John Stanley, as I said before, he used to go downtown at night and had a little stick, a long stick, and reach up and cut the lights off and then go back and come back on. That was before World Rearch Technology now. Back then, if you had a button, he could have pushed it, but he didn't. And his family lived up a place called Booth Lane. It's right over there off of Booth Street. And before the friendship heights were there, that was in the Spaggers Field. So that field, he wanted to go home. He and his family, which there were nine children, and also Buggsy worked out to the Elton Dada, which was out near Holly Hole Manor. And that's beyond some people's time, but I do remember. So he's had a good history, and I'm glad to see him be recognized for that. Number two, I was at Gilken Manor yesterday during lunchtime. I've been there before. It's a task helping those little kids with their lunches, because kindergarten, first grade, graders had difficult times opening the milk, opening the juices. Sometime they need help walking them to the tables with the tray. Sometime they can be nuisance and you got to raise your boys at them, but it's all fun. But the one good thing about it, there was one of the classes, I think the fourth grade class, that came through the last time was there, which was a month ago. And the young boy said, oh, you're Mr. Gibbons from the town of Elton. So I'm saying, I'm from the town of Elton. But anyhow, that group had a lesson on the thistles from the town of Elton. So they've seen each of us on the videos, and I thought that was great. We used to go up to the Elton High School when they invited us, but here's a case where they actually had history and they know all about us, so that's good. Earl, you might want to go up there sometime and help out. And Dan, not Dan, but Dan are our attorney. I'm like Dwight Hare. We got two thirteen East Ty Street situated now. Do you know when that's going to be torn down?
The executive has it in their office to sign, and when that is signed, we'll be reporting the deeds in the town. And when the deeds are done, and all we need is a check, and we'll be reporting, actually two checks, two lots.
And Rob, you mentioned the Holly Hole building. I drove by there coming out of the Apple Store Mall the other day. That building looks bad.
Terrible.
It was a nice building in the community. It wasn't done. And I did see Ed Kimball last night. We were in the same lot at Apple getting medicine. And he was saying that he is actively looking for somebody who buys his property. He said he has had as many as seven conversations in a week about his property. But most of the people there want him to hold the mortgage. And he said he's not in that business now to hold the mortgage. He wants to sell the building and get out of it. And, you know, I guess he wants to spend time doing other things and to be home with his wife, who was somewhat active in his community as well. And that's it.
Very good. Gene?
Well, Margie Blystone and Jessica Price couldn't be here today, but you guys stole that thunder, so I'm talking about Bernard Purdy, so. I basically have nothing now. But now, Dan, I wanted to thank you and your crew for getting that line painted finally at North Street. Much appreciated. And the mayor kind of sparked my curiosity about parks that you are, or areas that you guys are doing grass cutting in. I mean, would there be any other areas similar to that that we might want to take a look at?
Sure.
I'd be interested.
I think we do, I don't know, like a hundred and forty-five acres, I think, or something like that, something in that ballpark, including the two big parks, so.
Yeah, mostly I'm thinking neighborhood areas that aren't being maintained. I know back twenty years ago, a lot of these were set up for homeowners associations that never either took off or went defunct. And therefore, they came back to us.
What was the other?
So I would be curious to see, maybe we can come up with a creative way to either keep them or not. I don't know. Thank you. That's all I have.
You know, I guess to kind of give an update, and I don't think that I'm giving out any proprietary information, but I was, I know that one oh seven North Street has closed. So the Old Town Hall, the property has closed, and it's the individual that wants to put the music venue in. I think he came in front of us probably well over a year ago, and he finally put it, but he definitely closed on that. The property where Showcase on Main, the old Western Auto, has closed. And when I say closed, that's sold. The Showcase on Main, I think, has agreed to a lease for like the next several months. But the owners are looking at doing the Japanese Steakhouse right there on Main Street. And I was told that there's going to be a contract on Eddie's Fashions, which is, they told me the type of business, and I don't want to get into that, but it was very good. It was all good. And the building where Penny's Pastry's is, there's going to be a new owner of the building. So it won't, it won't affect anything other than there's a new owner of the property. So there's been some really good action, quite frankly, on Main Street. Okay, with that, this is the time to open up the floor. Anyone has anything to say for the good of the town of Elton? Ms. Diane Inherit, tell us your address and give us what you got. Good to see you.
Thank you. I think we were Elton, yeah. You all touched on incident that I had. That's a Holly Hole. Coming into Elton, it's not at all a way to say welcome. The trees down, the wood is up, it's disgraceful. I don't know if you can put action on, more action, but it is disgraceful.
You know, I'd like to add to that, the, just so everyone's aware, the Holly Hole building is part of the parcel that includes the rear part of the Big Elk Mall. So where the sun tanning spot was, all those spots are included in with that one parcel. It's all one parcel. And I met with David Cordish, who owns Maryland Live Casino, Philadelphia Live Casino. We've talked for over eight years now. And he actually, if he was in this room right now, I can promise you, what he would say to us is, find me a use for it. He said, I'll donate it as long as it does not compete with my Big Elk Mall. But he's given me the same lip service for eight years. We brought, I had Cecil College go over and take a look at it. We thought it would be a great culinary school. I took that proposal to him, and the dollars, he just didn't want to throw the dollars into it. But he had hit, sit there and tell you, I'll give you a million dollars, I'll give you the property, and it's all yours, town of Elton, or whoever, whatever nonprofit wants to take with it. He's done it over and over and again. The latest conversation I had with him, and Gene Minter and I had this discussion, and he said, get it an appraisal done. And when that appraisal comes back, he said, I'll, once again, I'll donate it to the town of Elton. You know, it's over, over again. So we finally got an individual that will give us a commercial appraisal, but it's over sixty-five hundred dollars. So I did not give the authorization to Gene Minter to get the appraisal done. This was just recently again. Only because I need to speak with Mr. Cordish again to find out, are we just wasting our sixty-five hundred dollars? But if we get it appraised and it comes back, because when we get it appraised, it's not just that one building. It's the portion of the Big Elk Mall. And is he willing to give us that as a tax deduction? I mean, that's what it's going to come down to.
He wouldn't subdivide it?
I wouldn't. But it currently cannot be subdivided, because if you remember correctly, the organization called ACE, it goes back old. There's a deed restriction that that property cannot be subdivided. Now, he wanted it subdivided, I'm going to say twenty years ago, and the organization wouldn't do it. We believe today, John and I had this conversation, we believe that if, because ACE isn't even around anymore. ACE Corporation, Mrs. Scott's no longer with us, that whole organization, United Way, that all the proceeds went to, they're the ones that put that deed restriction on. So we're trying to see if we can get it subdivided off of there. So we're still working on it, but he's not going to do anything to that. He's allowing it to.
I wouldn't want to get an appraisal for something that we don't have any use, anybody coming to us for that property. If somebody came to us seeking what's going with that building, then it might be our reason to get an appraisal. But if nobody's ever, I wouldn't waste money on that. I mean, I'm just saying to myself personally.
Just one additional bit of information. If you look at the bylaws and articles of incorporation for any bylaw in C three corporation, they're required to have sort of a clause that says, what happens in the event that this entity, this corporation goes to defunct? They had that. And my understanding is the deed restrictions, the architectural historic restrictions, have been transferred and assigned to another entity. So I think they're still in place, they're still recorded in the land records, and they're still enforceable. But if Mr. Cordish decides that he would go through with the deal you described, I think that perhaps we could find out the entity that those rights were assigned to. And perhaps they will be reasonable and realize that some improvement to the property that maintains the property would be better than having it all collapse on itself.
I agree wholeheartedly. Now, I know that the Maryland Historic Trust, that's a historic property. And I know that we could get funding to bring that building back. I know that we can get that through, very similar to what we did at Elk Landing. I know that we can make that happen. It's just getting him to get off of that little parcel. So maybe you and I will work on that again. Okay.
In the meantime, is it possible that some organization or the sheriff, when the boys want, need some exercise or something else, I take them over there and clean that up, just to get, get it cleaned up? That tree that's down, I don't know.
We didn't, we.
Somebody from, kids from the college technical school that are interested in landscaping or something, something that makes that area attractive, like maybe I will go into Elton.
I follow you a hundred percent. There is a maintenance individual at Big Elk Mall. I probably need to reach out to him and say, we need to get this done. If you don't get it done, then we'll get it done, and then we'll just leave the property and so on.
Can you charge?
We would. We would at that point, but I'd say right now it would be, we probably have to send him a letter, wouldn't we, John? I mean, it's, we just came across a little hiccup that we did the other day, quite frankly. You don't ask permission, and you do it like that, you get your hands slapped.
And unfortunately, now there is a lot of pedestrian traffic that cuts through. And then, as Ron drew on yesterday, you can see at the most outer part where somebody either left a personal property trash, looked like a van was out there, so I would imagine that people are still using it.
As soon as this meeting's over, I will call him. I'll call him right from here. Maybe I should call him live. Anyone else have anything to say for the good of the town today? Seeing none? Meeting adjourned.